Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the Planning and Zoning Special Meeting, May 31st. I call the meeting to order, and I'll start roll call on the left.
June Gagney.
Charlotte Sardance.
Ryan Shitt.
Ryan Bright.
All right. So Kevin will be appointed for Franklin tonight. He'll be full voting member this evening. So, public hearing, Z 2022, 2275 with Planning and Zoning Commission, applying for amendment to the zoning regulations for accessory dwelling units. So this is a continuation of the public hearing from earlier this month. We had some more specific items we wanted to discuss, so we set aside special meeting for it. Ryan, do you want to kick off some of the items?
Sure. So, the only things that the Commission was, the Commission and the Town Planner was discussing was although accessory dwelling units up to 900 square feet with direct access through to the house would be allowed by right, it was discussed kicking it to the Commission for review. So it's taken out as zoning officer stands, giving it to the Commission. By right, no special permit needed, just a special review. And that is for ours and results. Also for detached. Detached accessory dwelling units. In Section E, for an ADU located in an outbuilding, living room floor area may equal 100%, and it was discussed to reduce that down to 75% possibly. So 75% of the living room floor area of the primary dwelling, not to exceed 1,200 square feet. So the purpose for that was that the Town Planner and the Commission thought that possibly 100% living room square area being the same size as the house, the primary dwelling, now would be too large. So to reduce it to 75% for detached dwellings.
And Ryan, if memory is serving, there would no longer be special permit required for any accessory dwelling. They would all be by right?
No, no. Just up to 900 square feet with direct pass. Essentially, the same regulations that we have currently.
Yep.
But currently, we allow for 600 square feet direct pass through, one bedroom, and it's bumped up to 900 square feet. And that's basically the only change. That will be allowed by right, but the Commission would review it. So it was also discussed possibly ADUs attached to the primary dwelling. That would not be the definition of an attached ADU living room floor area not to exceed 75% of the living room floor area of the primary dwelling, except when located either above or below the primary dwelling, in which case the ADU may equal, but not exceed, 100% of the living room floor area. So what that means is, that's maximum 1,200 square feet. That means is if you had, say, a raised ranch, you could put an ADU in the basement of the raised ranch, which typically has, typically has living space anyway, and it would be able to equal the living space upstairs up to 1,200 square feet. Also, if you had a colonial, you wanted to convert it upstairs, so the ADU would go up to 100% of the first living room floor area. And it was discussed possibly reducing that to 75%. So that's something the Commission can consider if they want. Moving over to accessory dwelling units in commercial districts. Section B, multiple ADUs may be permitted either above or below the primary commercial floor, detailed floor plans are required. And then, per discussion, I included however, the maximum living room floor area must not exceed 100% of the floor area dedicated to commercial uses. So if somebody was constructing a new building, and they wanted the second story to be apartments, they could not, say, add two stories of 100% there. So if they have a three-story building, they can only go up to 100% of the downstairs, which is typical of historic base.
So if the floor space of a personal building is 3600 square feet, one apartment upstairs, 3600 square feet?
No. So the maximum of any apartment could be up to 1,200 square feet. Say you have a 5,000 square foot commercial building, and then you retire upstairs, you have 5,000 square feet of residential, but no apartment can exceed 1,200 square feet.
So you get multiple apartments.
Yeah.
And the thinking behind that is it's difficult today with commercial space. A lot of times, people aren't able to rent out all commercial space, or if they are, they're not able to rent it for the cost of paying the bills for the building. So they've offset it with residential.
Is that by special permit?
Yes, it's by special permit. The only thing that will be allowed by right is the 900 square foot attached with direct pass.
Okay, right.
That permit changes that I had or the suggestions that I had based on Commissioner Collins' comments from the Town Planner.
So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question on this application, just stand up, state your name for the record and what your comment or question is.
My question is, is what's the point of having to come to board for review by right? Because you can't deny it.
Correct.
It's what's approved no matter what. So does it have to be by right or can't be by approval?
Well, basically, it's by right can either be by the zoning officer or through the Commission, one of the two. So it's just either I review it or the Commission reviews it, in which case I would review it anyway.
But it'll be approved no matter what because it's by right, right?
As long as it meets the regulations, yes.
So if it meets the regulations with you, what does it want to look?
That was the discussion. What do we want in regulation?
Well, if it's by right, I think that's his job.
Sure.
I mean, that's my opinion.
I just don't like the word "by right."
It's just a term.
I know.
Well, it's allowable in the zone. So when we write, you know, if we were to accept these amendments, then it is changing the standard from special permit to by right, meaning it's allowed in the zone without additional public hearing and without a kind of right of refusal. Because it meets the regulations, it's approved, period. Whereas special permit, there's different items of consideration that the Commission can use to deny or approve an application.
Essentially, the Commission will be looking at a zoning permit, such as what I would say, upon, so the standard zoning permit to the Council of the Commission for your review.
So the ones that would remain special permit is anything greater than 900 square feet, which...
So get them one bedroom.
Which is one bedroom. And that's in all zones. But by making that the threshold for special permit, then anything that meets that test would be allowed by right in all zones.
All residential.
Because the commercial is its own specific...
That is a special permit.
1,200 square feet, correct? Well, no. By right is up to 900 square feet with direct pass through, one bedroom.
And all commercial is special permit?
Yep.
And detached in residential is special permit?
Yes. Detached over 900 square feet, only one bedroom, no direct pass through between the apartment and the primary dwelling. That'll require special permit.
Everything you've just said is in writing, right?
Except for the... Except for the ADU above or below the residential living space. So that would be 12.2812. C, for ADUs attached to the primary dwelling that do not meet the definition of an attached ADU, the living room floor area must not exceed 75% of the living room floor area of the primary dwelling, except when located either above or below the primary dwelling, in which case the ADU may equal, but not exceed, 100% of the living room floor area with a maximum of 1,200 square foot living room floor area. And we discussed possibly reducing that to 75%.
So the reason I favored reducing to 75% is because these are accessory dwellings. So if they become equal to, then it is a duplex. So the accessory part, it's kind of washed out. So I would favor putting the reduce to 75% because if it's an accessory dwelling, it should still maintain the accessory part. That was my perspective on that one. Go ahead, state your name.
Sean Peterson. My other question for you today is, I live, where I live is in a developed, I think it's RA 30. So you're saying by right, I would be allowed to build a separate building in my backyard as long as it fits within the building envelope, and I could turn that into a rental property? So you know what you're going to do to all these developments in this town? You've got Colonial Woods everywhere.
It would still have to meet septic rules?
City sewer.
City sewer? So the, I'm not familiar with the city sewer rules, so I don't have that, but...
They would just have to hook up the city sewer, or they could run a line directly into the house or tie into the...
Because there's not a building lot limitation, like square footage wise?
Right. Now, were they detached, are they moved by special permit? And it was designed in that the Commission gets to review the location of it and require additional screening, additional setbacks if it's a new construction building? So there are some say that ours is...
We all said that, right?
So detached building only has to be, say, RA 60s only has to be 15 foot side, 10 floor rear, setbacks, but the Commission will bump that up if it's a new structure being constructed for an ADU.
Does that mean a 150 for each? Is that 150 in that category?
For a newly, for newly proposed furniture, I guess 150.
But the accessory dwelling would not require additional footage?
Would that would fall under the 150 that's already there?
Correct. Because the lot is already established. So the accessory dwelling unit would not increase the road footage requirement?
So I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding. You're thinking that these are going to be turned into rentals? Is that what I heard?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
There's nothing to probably...
Why wouldn't I?
Yeah.
Why would I build a building in my backyard and charge someone a cost of $15,000? It's my work.
So all detached are by special permit, period, regardless of size?
Right.
But that's saying to me now, even if I give you a special permit, maybe it's from now I can turn it into a rental. That's what I'm thinking.
Not even telling you...
Tomorrow.
Well, just say it.
Because it's not an in-law apartment. Accessory dwelling unit is not required to be used by the owner or a family member. It can be used by anybody. So there is no restriction on these...
There's actually no restriction, yeah.
Correct. It's just the most common what we see is usually the...
That's why you're coming up to her, I'm going to build an in-law apartment.
Sir?
Sorry, Sean Peterson.
Thank you. Got to state your name for the record.
But that's what everybody does anyways at this point. They build an apartment for their in-laws or mother, somebody. That person passes on, and what do you do now? Might as well rent it, make some money. That's what everybody has to do. So all these in-law apartments are really just apartments.
Or...
You got to state your name for the record. This is a public hearing.
It should.
Thank you.
Or that awful word we don't like to hear.
Well, it's an awful word.
Yeah, it's an awful word.
Yeah, we don't get to say it in a public hearing.
So this is all a problem with the detached, you know?
It's a point of consideration. So when we review and approve regulations, it is for the entire zone. So if there's an RA 30 neighborhood, and there are 12 units, would then become a neighborhood of 24 units.
So we don't have a detached apartment now, do we?
No.
Okay. So this is all, the whole thing is all about the detached.
Correct.
Right.
Yep. And what prompted all of this, for anyone who's not aware, was that the state of Connecticut changed the statutory language in order to make accessory dwelling units more accessible. We, as a town, opted out of their language. However, we are required to reevaluate our own regulations to make accessory dwelling units more accessible to the public. So that's the purpose.
Yeah, I have quite a few questions.
Mm-hmm.
First of all, Art Gagney, Jackson Road. Why are we changing it to by right? If special, by special permit works for everything now, why are we changing it? We opted out of that.
So we had a discussion that we've never denied the special permit for an accessory apartment that's attached. So it's kind of burdensome for people to come through the special permit process for something that's so simple it's never been denied.
Okay. I'm just seeing there's reasons why you would want the public hearing. Oh, let me ask you a question. You're going to change it to commission approval or review? Does that include a public hearing?
It doesn't.
So the neighbors wouldn't have... Okay, because this is where I have a problem with the detached, and this is where I have a problem with the lot size restriction. Because I live in a half-acre lot, and I could put it up in an ADU. How close to my side yard? 10 feet?
I think you're in the RA 60 zone, so 15 side, 10...
15 feet from my neighbor's property, and I could rent it to somebody that plays music at midnight, you know, with the window open. So I have a problem with the lot size restriction on smaller lots, especially like that, when we have a multifamily regulation that requires half-acre in RA 19 per unit, and it requires a 3/4 acre per unit for RA 30. I don't think there is any restriction RA 40, RA 60. But some, like I said, I'm an RA 60, and I have less than half an acre. So I, you know, to me, to put a 900 square foot ADU there is ludicrous because you're going to be right against the next person. Like Sean says, it's going to be worse. Colonial Woods is all single-family. They could put all ADUs. I think there needs to be a lot, lot size restriction, just like the multifamily.
Actually, it wouldn't be allowed in Colonial Woods.
Reason being?
Reason being it's RA 19 cluster, and we do not have this in RA 19 cluster.
Okay. I didn't know that was a different zone. Okay. So, yes, lot size restriction. I'd still like to see a public hearing, so I'd still like to see it by special permit. I'm talking to anyone. All right. You made notes about the sewer. Somebody made notes, maybe Marianne, about the sewer. So any, anyone with a septic, first of all, has to go through the Department of Health. It has to be inspected. Anyone with sewer that's detached has to go through the State Department of Health for the connection that has to be inspected. So already, you got more people involved than just one person. I just, I think it, it makes sense to be able to have the abutting property owners weigh in on this. If this is going to be right on their property line, why wouldn't, why wouldn't they have the chance to?
Well, you...
Even, even an attached in a small area like that, you're going to be on property lines.
For an attached, you have to make greater setbacks. So because the primary structure must meet greater setbacks than a detached structure. So RA 60 zone, you have to be at least 40 feet away from the side property lines. 40 feet from the rear.
Mm-hmm.
RA 40 and 30 have to be at least 30 feet away. RA 19, 20, 20 feet.
So this is, this is where I would make a compromise. If you have, if you have to do an ADU in a tight lot like that, do it only at a maximum of 900 square feet and only attached. Don't do a detached in a quarter regular lot. It just doesn't make sense. But this is where, you know, while that goes through a special permit anyway, so you'd, you'd be seeing that one. But things like this, we have to think about, you know, it's...
I thought RA 60 was a 1.38 or...
But some are already zoned, you know. Ours was, ours was built in 76.
And, hold on. I know this is not a usual public hearing because it's such a small group, but we still have to observe the same rules we normally would. So it's not a back-and-forth debate between audience members and Commission members. State your comment, question, and then we'll go from there.
She asked a question.
I am.
Sorry.
I was speaking to all people present.
To answer a question, for a newly created lot, 1.38 is minimal. But there are also existing lots that pre-DAU's only that can be small.
And then my other question would be, where are we planning on going with ADUs? Because I've been doing some research since our last meeting, and I just did a Google search on ADUs in Connecticut. I'd like to share some of that. Well, first of all, California started with ADUs, and they saw an 11-fold increase in ADU approvals just in the first four years. That's 11-fold. We just approved four last year. So we're looking to do 40 a year, okay? Fairfield County, they're looking to do 40,000 over the next 20 years. That's 2,000 a year in Fairfield County. They want... So this is why I'm asking you, what are we planning? Are we planning on increase? Because you're lightening the restrictions on it so that people like Sean or myself, we could build ADUs, okay? So then you got, you got to ask... Okay, I was just handed something. Let me find where it says. I was just handed something for Franklin. And Franklin and Lisbon, and they're both opting out of this also. They don't think it's a good idea. Just mark this. Where is it? Bear with me for a second.
And my current regulations are not for 900 square feet. Current regulations are for 600.
600.
So if the purpose was to make by right those things that we already approve routinely, we do not approve 900 square feet, we approve 600. So if we were going to suggest something by right that was consistent with what we previously, it'd be 600, not 900. So really, anything over 600 should go for special permit.
So we were discussing that, and we are going back several months ago. But a lot of people claim that 600 square feet wasn't anywhere near enough for a handicapped individual to put wheelchairs in, more safely to move it. And so I suggested maybe 800, and somebody else said 900, and I said 600.
And by the way, I like the 900 square feet ADA compliance. Both of these towns, in their purpose, they wrote additions to it. And a couple of these additions were to protect historic, tribal, cultural, and environmental resources, and also to consider impacts to adjacent municipalities. So if we're going to increase our population by doing these ADUs, what are we doing to towns around us even by allowing this? It's something to ask. And back to the Ridgefield, it's similar to what I would like to see. They have lot size restrictions and 900 square feet max. Norwalk is about the same, smaller 1,000 square feet, and they're staying out of their busy areas. They're not going to allow them there. New Haven is reducing residential lot size to 4,000 square feet. But then, they're also concerned about mega landlords. So they're going to try and keep it owner occupied, all the ADUs, because New Haven's different. I thought this one was interesting. Princeton, New Jersey, somebody did an experiment. She's, her name is Marina Rubina. She's a political activist, and she sued Princeton to be, to be able to build an ADU. She put, it's on Linden Lane, 23,000 square foot house. She's selling for 1.3 million. With 1,400 square foot ADU, she's selling for 850,000, okay? Because they didn't have anything in place to stop them from selling them separately. So it brings it to my mind, what's going to happen to our property values, okay? He builds an ADU, I build an ADU. And you try and sell this house now with another house on it, on the lot. It might get tough. They, you know, who's, I got to buy two houses now, right? So something to think about. The POCD calls for high-density housing if we want to do housing. It doesn't call for this. So I don't know why we're straying off of that. So there's my big three things, is keep it by special permit. Have lot size restrictions, like the multifamily, because it is a multifamily. Each, each accessory dwelling unit is considered a dwelling unit. So there are to be two dwelling units. I know I mentioned this last meeting, that your zoning regulations for RA 40, RA 60, Z, I mean, 7.21A, 7.22A, they say you only can have one dwelling unit per lot. So we're in, we're in violation of that anyway. By allowing 600 square foot attached ADUs, we still have two dwelling units per lot. So that does have to change.
No, it doesn't.
Why wouldn't it?
Because an ADU is not served to be a separate dwelling, accessory.
According to you, then you need to change the definitions in the zoning regulations because it says clearly, it says that it is a dwelling unit.
The dwelling unit refers to the primary structure.
Dwel...
Okay, we're not going to get into a debate on the terminology.
Well, then, then you...
Your definition's been noted for the record.
You need to look at the definite, the Commission needs to look at the definition of what a dwelling unit is. Yes.
Yeah.
That, the lot size restriction, and I don't think it should be 1,200 square feet for an accessory. 900's fine. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Sean Peterson.
Thank you.
I'm not opposed to accessory dwelling units, but I think you guys should be weighing out. Just because you approve them all the time, or they always get approved, is not a reason to say, well, just make it by right. Because I never use my insurance, but jeez, I might need it someday. Just like you guys, you might need that someday to... Somebody's going to put something that just doesn't work, or doesn't look right, or... But you, but it fits the criteria, but there's still a problem because you can't call that problem out because it's not listed as a problem. You're taking away that ability to stop it or control it because you're making it by right, you know?
Yeah, but is he involved with controlling it? Isn't that your job?
But it follows the regulations. So if it follows the regulations, it's approved, period. There is no public hearing, there is no contesting of what it is or how it is.
If you want to build a building on your lot, and...
And I would just have Commission members look at what our current regulations say and what is our goal. So given we opted out of what the state was mandating, right? We opted out because we were like, too much, too fast, not where we want to go, right? But we all agree that ours are very restrictive. So how do we make them less restrictive without letting it be a complete free-for-all? So the current regulations say accessory apartments are allowed, apartments are allowed by special permit in all resident districts when attached to single-family dwelling. So I think we have found somewhat consensus that the 600 square feet because of ADA regulations is a little restrictive. So an easier change is to change that square footage, increase it. Still by special permit, but in all, all residences. What is new is the detached aspect of it, which once again, the Commission can choose to strike that all together and say, we're not ready to pursue allowing detached accessory dwellings. That is the latitude we have. So what's drafted here are suggestions. We can take them, leave them, or modify them. So I think it's important, we as a Commission, read what exists now. What you feel in the now is too restrictive. What do you feel is necessary? If you truly feel that it should not have public hearing, then it doesn't require a special permit. It would be by right. And by doing by right, what you are then saying is, as long as you... And by doing by right, what you are then saying is, as long as you meet the criteria, Ryan can sign off on it, or whoever the CEO is 50 years from now.
Right, and he'll be retired by then, I'm sure.
So that's what's, that's the task ahead of us now. So in looking at this, you know, if you strongly feel detached is not something that we want to address at this point, we can strike it from the proposal.
What's that? I'll make a motion to strike it.
Yeah, we don't have a motion. So what would happen is, we continue to redraft, revise, and then at the next meeting, we would have the revised. So then when we do act, it either includes the language or does not include the language.
So if you'd like me to include that, I can, but also keep in mind that in the current definition that we have, detached also applies to ADUs that are located within a structure, like a garage above the garage that does not have direct pass through, also either above or below the house that does not have direct pass through. That falls under detached. Do you want to incorporate that as being a form of attached without direct pass through?
So an expansion of attached, because the garage is attached to the home?
Yes.
Is that something the commission would like Ryan to reform? So strike the detached completely.
As in being in a structure that is not attached to the house?
Right. So if it's in my... Unattached garage, so you have your home, and then 50 feet away is your garage. We would be striking the ability to put an accessory dwelling on that detached garage. But we would expand the definition of an attached so that it would include an attached garage that has an accessory dwelling unit above the garage, but the entrance is not through the home. It would be an exterior entrance, is that correct?
That sounds much better. I do like the 900 square feet.
Yeah. I don't, it's not accessible for, like, my wheelchairs.
Madam Chair, is the public hearing still...
Hold on one moment. Yep, go ahead. State your name for the record.
Madeline Fesigl.
Thank you.
Did this all come about because of the state's push for affordable housing?
So it wasn't affordable housing. They had some additional, because there is a housing shortage, the state was trying to increase the availability of housing in the state of Connecticut.
It's like two different things, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And looking on that, and affordable housing.
So this is not affordable housing. It doesn't meet that definition of affordable.
That will sound like a...
It does.
And that's what we opted out of?
So we opted out of the state's mandatory language in regards to accessory dwelling units, which was not affordable housing units. So it's different definitions. Yeah. Ed, did you have any comments? Okay, all right.
So for clarification, would you want to keep up the 900 square feet direct pass through as above by right?
I agree.
I'm going to do. I'm saying special permit for everything.
And a 40 should be...
And, well, and once again, if you think about a 12-house neighborhood, every house there could apply, and then, yeah, I like special permit.
So how do you feel about the, well, so we had, we had up to 900 square feet by right, and then you could exceed the one bedroom, and you could exceed, go up to 900, up to 1200 square feet, would you like to make any modifications to that?
I think if there's a go for plan available, that's, that's, that's possible. That's my view.
Well, we'd have to make a rest modification to have density requirements.
What's drastic?
Well, I mean, we'd have to change it to require density requirements, and so, so many acres for you.
But I think for a specialty, go for a special permit. You have to have that in which to even apply for special permit.
Right now, it's not allowed.
It's allowed in all residential districts. If you're a residential district, you would be eligible to apply.
Well, all of them.
That's what the current regulations are.
I think that makes a good point, though. I think to have a density requirements would make this more, more rational. So would you like to see the density requirement?
I'd be...
But you don't think that'll fly to you?
No, I don't think so either. I do want to see the 75% limit of max, though. I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but I don't feel the accessory should be equal to the primary.
But I don't have a number in mind that...
Or what?
I think that that could definitely play a role in the plan.
Keep in mind that it's going to make it more restrictive, more restrictive of...
Correct. Well, that's a whole change, anyway, from 600 to 900, to 1,200 to a half, an acre, three quarters of an acre, 1.38 acre.
But I think part of the point is that the density is by the RA 1930, 40, and 60. So you've already had that part established. So this is accessory to that, and it's limited by the square footage and the percentage of dwelling. So I'm not so sure that density requirement would actually...
Maybe we'll also need to elevate that.
Correct, correct. And we're eliminating the detached aspect. I think I heard that loud and clear from everybody. So there will be no detached accessory dwelling units allowed in the town, period.
So what I'll be doing is I'll be striking the direct pass through altogether. And maximum square footage, 75%, and 1,400 square foot max, two bedrooms.
On special permit?
Everything, well, we've already spoken about striking the by right. So everything we want special permit.
Because currently, it's a one-bedroom.
One bedroom, and by what we came up with, 900 square feet with direct pass through. So the direct pass will be strictly up to 1,200 square feet, two bedrooms. That's what we're talking about right now, with a special permit.
Which would keep the public hearing requirement and the notification to neighbors. Any other items from the public or from commission members regarding the language on this application?
So what was the two-bedroom?
State your name, please.
Sean Pearson, what was the two-bedroom aspect of that? You're upping it from one bedroom to two bedroom now? Well, by special permit, you'll be able to go up to two bedrooms and 1,200 square foot. So now we're striking...
That's good, you just increased some right by, by 350.
Well, so we're striking the by right, and so we're getting rid of the 900 square feet, getting rid of the one bedroom with the direct pass through, so you'd be able to go up with special permit to 1,200 square feet, 75% of the floor area of the primary dwelling, two bedrooms.
You just had an application a few months ago where the person had to figure out how to lay out to get that pass through, because you went along with those for the garage.
Right.
So there's a little longer to put on the other side of the garage. You've got a house here, it's long one here, with the garage in the middle, and it's all acceptable.
As long as it's attached.
Correct.
Correct.
Does a breezeway consider attachment?
That's what we'd have to discuss.
Or just a covered porch, does that consider attachment?
That's something we'd have to discuss.
Excellent point, thank you.
How do you feel about that, if it's a breezeway or a covered porch or something that attaches garage to the house? How do we classify it? Has that...
Structurally impacted.
Anything that, anything that could classify if designed into the regulations. So how do you feel about that?
Is that, would that be enclosed, or would that be just...
You could have, you could have an open breezeway, just a roof covering between the house and garage if you want.
Hold on, let's keep all the comments where they're... Yep. So you're next. Finish your thought, Ryan, sorry.
So you could design it so that you could have a house with a garage 15 feet away with a covered breezeway that's not enclosed, and you'd consider that to be attached. Or it could require some sort of, you know, enclosed area, at least a three-seater or a four-seater, you know? It depends on how you want it structured.
I think we're all coming to a consensus that it has to be more significant than just like a covered area or a breezeway. Go ahead, Joe. Common wall? Is that a good language? Common wall?
That's what we currently require, so we'd just be limiting the direct pass through and have it attached by common wall.
Sean Pearson, if you use the common wall, how does that work with the garage? Because you have a, the common wall has got a garage between the two of them. You have two common walls, so it's... Does the garage still consider attachment?
Yeah, so what they're discussing is the common wall, the garage would have to be attached to the house by a common wall, not by a breezeway.
Correct.
Okay.
So...
So then the house, the other addition, we have to make the garage, that's a separate thing. Because when you say common wall, I'm thinking, there's a common wall between this house and this house, or this structure and this structure.
Okay.
That's the way I'm envisioning common wall.
So what we're talking about right now is, we couldn't have a house with a garage attached to it, and then an ADU off to the side of the garage.
The other side of the garage.
Right.
House connection, and ADU.
Right, so that's, you don't want that. So the ADU has to be basically attached to the house by a common wall above the garage.
Above garage, right. Or a basement.
So you're not going to, Sean Pearson, so you wouldn't be allowing a house, garage, and an addition connected?
Right.
So you wouldn't have that, garage would be a common wall, basically. But you're not going to allow that?
No, it'd be, I'd design it so that you have to, the common wall would have to embody the house.
Okay, the garage would have to be attached. Attached garage, that's...
And then the apartment would be above the garage? Okay. Any other comments from the...
Yeah, we discussed, so then, let's say somebody has a house above the breezeway, garage. How does one of the breezeway, you know, you...
I think we would not allow that.
Right, so that's what we're just discussing. Would not be allowed.
Right.
But isn't he not allowing a garage between the two living structures?
Right, you wouldn't have a garage addition.
You can't have a garage in a house. No, you would not, you can't do that, they say.
No, right. No, the house...
So that would make the breezeway, the house, breezeway, garage, it wouldn't work anyways.
Correct, yeah.
You're saying you want both houses.
Correct.
By one common wall, garage is not, cannot be. So that would help that, Joe, because it's still...
Correct. Correct. All right, so from tonight's, from tonight's discussion, striking the detached completely, modifying so that they are all special permit, that the maximum is 75% of the primary, 900 with a maximum of 1,200.
No, we're striking 900.
900, so maximum 1,200, with also maximum two bedrooms. So we're going from eliminating one bedroom only to allowing up to two bedrooms. So that would be another significant change if the commission wants to move forward with that recommendation. Now, this is not being determined tonight. We will continue this public hearing to the next meeting because we have many revisions to review. So with all that in mind, are there any other items for tonight before we see revisions?
Yes. Well, I just wanted to read Franklin's take on the, on the square footage. They said maximum net floor area for an ADU is 1,000 square feet, or less than 30% of the net floor area of the principal dwelling. So you're about that, 75, they're going 70. The only other thing I wanted to ask is, in the changes, say, section 7.21, RA 60 districts, it reads accessory dwelling unit, ADU, attached to a single-family structure not exceeding 900 square feet of livable floor area. The next one down, 721C, says same thing, accessory dwelling unit, ADU, attached to a single-family structure with over 900 square feet livable floor area. Now, I'm assuming you're talking about the ADUs livable floor area here, not the, not the main structure itself. Because it sounds like you're talking about the main structure has to have less than 900 or more than 900, the primary residence.
No, ADU.
Right, but it reads, attached to a single-family structure with over 900 square feet livable floor area, sounds like the living, the principal structure has to have 900 square feet or more.
No, that's the ADU.
I understand that, Ryan, I'm just saying, it reads like that. That's all. To a person on the street, it might read that they need to have 900 or over 900 square feet in their primary dwelling. Maybe those could be rewritten, where you see accessory dwelling unit with over 900 square feet can be attached to a single-family home.
That's being rewritten, anyway.
Oh, okay, yeah. So that's all, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? And, so hearing none. Entertained a motion to continue the public hearing so we can consider all the revisions we have asked Ryan to make. Motion by Roz, second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is continued to our next meeting, second Tuesday of the month. Moving on to the regular meeting, call it to order. Citizen participation, this is for comments from the public not related to public hearing.
Special.
All right. Unfinished old business, ZH 1022, 2275. Since we continue the public hearing, we just need to motion to continue the old business. Motion to continue by John. Second by Roz, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Continued to our next meeting. Correspondents?
I have nothing.
Okay. A report from zoning enforcement.
Okay, 14 Penangway Road, the Trivolio junk vehicle, the property. Progress in that has stalled out, so demand level was set by attorneys to have property compliance within 14 days, and that's down to May 25. Three, I don't know if that was received yet. 3244 North Roads, we have a sleeve, this is still a port system, so we're not able to discuss that. 211 came down the road, Mackin, with construction equipment, residential property. We had the trial last week, which we prevailed. Mr. Mackin must pay for all of attorney's fees, a total of $8,075. And he has a couple things removed from the property, a PIB box and a turnout box. So we're monitoring that to make sure it is removed. 13 Simmons Ave, Driscoll Motor Vehicle Junkyard, this is going for the court, they're waiting for a hearing date. Harborsor Extension, PHA's Mortgage Corporation for the junkyard. Significant progress was made, almost all of the junk was taken off the property. There is still a number of boats and campers that they are working on removing. They are working on how to fix that up, getting it ready for sale, so I imagine they'll be removing all those vehicles shortly. 371 Lurie Road, basement apartment without permits, they're waiting to see what we do with the regulations, but the apartment is vacant. 256 Spalding Road, RBS dwelling, commercial tractor trailer boxes, and job site trailer. One of the commercial trailer boxes was removed. Aside from that, the second one is unchanged. The RBS is not here to be occupied. They also will be sent to counsel for a command letter. 90 Musa Pond Road, standing property for dead trees. The dead trees have a market replacement, they should be doing that shortly. 185 to 187 Main Street, Musa, a third-floor apartment, the tenants have been evicted, and the apartment is empty. They are working on permitting compliance, so removing... 8 Lafayette Ave, Reginald Gagman, mobile homeowner, re-erred property, this came in recently. Mobile home was sold onto a property, I don't know what the overall intent was, but they haven't dismantled it yet. It's almost completely dismantled, and they're going to have to tow the trailer out. Cease and desist will set out on May 31st to remove the trailer, and they signed a letter on 27th. So about 30 days from the 27th, they're moving. 5 Royal Street, Sol six, folks have picked the RA 19 zone, so they have been issued a cease and desist, which was signed for on May 21st, and they have 120 days to remove the, sorry, removing the house. 27 Picket Road, boosters in RA 30 zone, cease and desist was sent out on May 31st, and was picked up from the post office on May 27th, and they have 30 days to remove the boosters. 562 Skolling Road, for junkyard, multiple vehicles on the property. So they were sent a demand letter, they said that they would have all the vehicles removed by May 1st, which hasn't happened. There's very little, no progress, so this is being forwarded to counsel for court action. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So we did have on the agenda executive session, if anyone wanted to ask Ryan about some of the court cases that were pending, did anyone want to use executive session this evening? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Report from planning and engineering. I don't believe there was any report other than what Marion had presented previously, and I had no items under other. So seeing no other items for this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have motion by John, and a second by June, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.